Good evening. Welcome to the Talk of the Town. My name is Gary Woodbury. I'll be your host. Tonight, we're going to be discussing, we have three candidates that are running for school committee. I did invite all five. These three agreed to come on. The other two with regrets said they couldn't make it. First off, I'd like to say that we're here. This is a public forum. It's your vote. Hopefully, you'll understand where certain candidates stand on the issues, what they can bring to the forefront for the issues. First off, on my left, I have Kevin Hayes.
Good evening.
He's the incumbent. I have Dale Wilder.
Good evening.
And Kurt Norquist. And again, I did invite everybody to come on to the show. I'm going to give the candidates an opportunity to take a couple of minutes to at least talk about why they're running and why they're running for reelection so that you, the public, can understand where they're at, where they stand on the issues that are important to you, important to your kids, and important to the community. I always say that the difference between Spencer being a town or Spencer being a community is you, the people. So hopefully, you'll call in, ask the questions that you want the answers to, and we'll start off, I'll start with Kevin. Take a couple of minutes and explain why you're running for reelection and where you hope to bring the district even further.
Well, thank you, Gary, and thank you for the opportunity to share some time with you at home tonight. My hopes tonight is that I can help to dispel some of the misinformation, rumors, and innuendos that have spread throughout the community over the last several months. You know, I think Winston Churchill once said that "a lie can make its way halfway around the world before truth gets its pants on." I hope by the end of the evening tonight that you'll find that truth not only has its pants on, but its hat and coat as well. As you all know, that over the past several years, the financial status of the district has caused great concern at all levels. When I first came on the board in 2013, within weeks of being here, I was informed that there were no funds in order to pay for supplies for the cafeteria or to meet payroll in the upcoming several weeks. Emergency meetings had to take place. We reached out to our representatives and state senators, and emergency legislation was filed allowing us to borrow $1.1 million, which allows us to remain solvent and not go into bankruptcy and be taken over through state receivership. At the time that we did that borrowing, it was projected by the state that it would be about a 10-year period for us to be able to get the district back on track financially. I'm happy to inform you tonight that this year's budget, 2016-17 budget, has earmarked the funds to pay that bond note off in September of 2017, leaving the district debt-free. So it's safe to say from a financial standpoint, we've got the train back on the track. We've projected a budget this coming year that is balanced, that has allowed us to spend some $1.7 million in areas that have been overlooked for the last 12 to 15 years. Starting in this current summer, once the kids are out of class, we'll be starting the process to remove asbestos from the high school, to put in all new ceiling tiles throughout the building, to put in security systems, cameras, security doors at all school buildings throughout the district. And we'll also include the completion of the Wi-Fi program so that all schools come September will have access to utilize the technology that's been purchased. We have earmarked some $600,000 for the purchase of new technology to bring classroom instruction up to the 21st century and professional development to go along with that, to aid the teachers. So through the course of the evening, I look forward to answering your questions and hope that I can leave you more informed than you were when we started. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Dale?
Good evening. My name is Dale Wilder. I'm running for one of the two open seats on school committee. I think I have some of the same reasons as many for running. To create a better learning environment for the children, to bring everyone from the superintendent, staff, teachers, and parents and community back to the same page and work together as a team. I remember growing up as a young child in the town, playing town sports, school sports. There was great morale. Everybody loved being there. Everybody had the pride as high school. And just kind of bring everything back together again as a whole, get everybody working together.
That's about it. Appreciate it. Mr. Norquist?
Mr. Jim, thank you, Gary. I want to thank the people for listening tonight, and I'd be happy to answer their questions. I was on the board in 2013 when Mr. Hayes come out of Mr. Cludia, and I also voted to borrow the money. We were down to, couldn't pay for kids' last two weeks of lunches. That's how bad it was. And I also would like to say that it was paid from the school district without any taxpayers' assistance. It was paid out of the school budget, so the taxpayers didn't have to fund any of this $1.1 million. I also, in my last year, I signed on with the school committee and negotiated a teacher's contract, which is fair to everybody, to students, to teachers, and the town, and it brought them up to speed. And that was going on for almost a whole year before we got there, but I want to say that was done, and it's up to speed now. And what I didn't finish, and that's why I'm running, is to help out the students now with computers, with technology, and everything else. That was, I didn't get that far, but that's why I want to come back and do that and put this level three to level two in Spencer's Brookfield. And that's what I'm running for. Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Norquist. So, it seems like social media plays such a great role in our lives nowadays. I can remember when I got my smartphone, I always said it was for a dumb person. And it seems like you live by it, and it seems like everything out there is put that way. So we got a question, and the question is, and it's to all of you. It says, you know, "How will you address the communication issue between the administration, with the public, and with the, I would say, with the students overall, too? What would you do to open up that line of communications?" And if you watch social media, it seems like that's the biggest thing, is there's no communication. So whoever wants to go first on this, please feel free to jump in.
Well, Gary, I think it's a multifaceted problem. I think we have to start back in the beginning when Superintendent Crow first came to the district. You know, we went out and hired a superintendent that we knew was going to have a difficult job coming into the district. I mean, let's face it, if we're honest about the facts, this district was broken financially, was broken educationally, was broken culturally. It was going to require a lot of decisions to be made that in the end were going to result in making a lot of enemies and adversaries. But it was what had to be done in order to move the district forward. And so, right off the bat, once we get into the financial picture, looking at how we were doing business, before we knew it, we were upon an investigation in the way in which funds were being handled in the district. That gave a large spin-off with other employees leaving our employment. But they become personnel problems that cannot be discussed by the school committee or by the superintendent. And, look, we all know that a lot of the people that worked for us were good people. I mean, we've known them all for years. I mean, Dave Pageant, Joyce Nelson, some of the folks that left here were people that were well-respected and that we all knew personally. But there was change coming to this district, and some had difficulty in accepting that change. And so, people tend to mobilize to the camps that they supported and the people that they supported. And then I think the wheels just came off, and I don't think the superintendent was ever really given a fair opportunity to establish relationships throughout the district. I think within around two months, or maybe slightly more than that, the association took a vote of no confidence in the superintendent, which just made things all the more difficult. You know, there's a process for communications, and it doesn't always start at the top of being able to pick up the phone and get the superintendent's ear on every single question that residents may have, or that students may have, or that staff may have. You know, students have a process to go through with questions that they have that they want answered. Staff has a process to be followed to go through, and even administrators within the system have a process to go through. The school committee has a process of their own that they have to go through in order to communicate with the superintendent. And much to probably everyone's surprise, they don't have the authority to interfere into the day-to-day operations in the school systems, all with the principals or vice principals that are running the district. So, communication is a problem. It's not on an entry level, but when you start to get into talking about personnel matters and stuff, and those are the issues that become the center of attention with most people, we just simply can't respond.
Thank you, Kevin. Dale?
Um, I think one of the biggest things, if I was elected, I would put a motion to the board to have the superintendent send home quarterly reports to parents and, you know, with the children. That way, they get a better understanding of what's happening in each school of the district.
And I did read that in your write-up, and I thought that was pretty good, is to open up lines of communication. It seems like that's the downfall. Mr. Norquist?
Yeah, I just want to add to what Mr. Hayes and Mr. Wilder says. The student body represented, or had a person picked from the student body to represent them at the school committee, so that's the student's voice. If the students have a question, they should go to their representative, who they choose amongst themselves, and bring the question forward to the school committee. If a person wants to come to a school committee meeting, they have a right to come up and ask a question without being after somebody, so to say, just ask a general question. I know when I was on there, that was always the way it was. I think the superintendent could do a little bit more, getting back to people calling, and I heard a couple of calls from people had told me they called, and she didn't return the call, so I'm just going by what the people have told me, but I think she could do a little better with that. But like Mr. Hayes says, she's putting out fires and trying to go, trying to run the district in the office where she's the CEO, and, but she could do a little better than that, I think. As far as everybody else goes, I think, you know, we're just going ahead now, and I think that we can all work together on this. Thank you.
Gary, if I may, if I could just add a couple of points. First, I think the idea that Dale brought up is an idea that brings a lot of merit. I think the superintendent has the opportunity to send, you know, notices home, send information home through the children in the school district and stuff, and I think that that's a great idea that Dale has suggested, to open up the lines of communications between the parents and the students. I also think that Kurt is correct. I mean, I support the superintendent, but I also agree that communication could be better. I will say this: I support the superintendent at all points publicly. I've had more than my share disagreements with her in meetings behind closed doors, in her communication style, and how she chooses to address things. At the end of the day, we all have our own personality. We all choose to communicate the way in which we communicate. We all have our own management style, and quite honestly, that's something that's very difficult to change. I mean, you can work with people and try to influence some change, show the reasons why change is needed, but once the superintendent is hired, they're hired to run the school district and the day-to-day operations, and they choose the vehicle and the manner in which they're going to do that.
Well, now that we're on that, because we do have another question, and that question is to you, Mr. Hayes. It says, you know, "You have come under fire for the ways you run the school committee meetings, and some feel you run it with a heavy hand. Can you address this?" I don't quite know what that means, but...
Okay. Well, I certainly, I'll agree with that statement, and I'll take responsibility for that. I think that when you're the chairman to run a committee and you're up against the type of opposition that we've had in the 17 months that Dr. Crowe has been here, first of all, as the chairman, you have the responsibility of providing for the safety of all the participants that are present in the meeting. I mean, we got to a point this year, after some of the things that took place of having to have a police officer at the meeting in order to keep people under control. I don't make the rules of how meetings are run or how they're followed, but I do have to follow what the district policies are in order to run public meetings. Now, these policies can change at any time, as long as the school committee is willing to appoint a subcommittee to review policy and to make changes. A new school committee could do that at any time, and they could create an avenue for residents to be able to come and ask questions and get answers at night. I will tell you that that would be contrary to what the majority of the districts in the state do. We all basically follow the same rules and guidelines. They've been put out by mass associations, school superintendents, and school committee, and we still follow that policy. Now, that doesn't mean that it can't be tweaked, but just for the benefit of those watching at home, I will review a couple of the items on there so you'll have a better understanding that this really is not the choice of the superintendent, and I do not set the procedure of when people can speak, or what they can speak on, or how long they can speak. Here's the rules that we have to abide by in running the meetings. At a designated time of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting, there'll be an opportunity for citizens to be able to speak. We do that under citizens' input. Now, here, I violate this policy because I try to be open enough with people to come to a meeting to get an opportunity to get their thoughts out, but our policy says speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. The president chair may permit extension of this time limit as he sees fit. And I've done that on many occasions and allowed people to go sometimes seven, eight, nine minutes to get their thoughts out. Topics for discussion must be limited to those items listed on the school committee meeting agenda for that evening. So residents can't come into the meeting and just speak about whatever's on their mind or what happened at school that day that they think was handled incorrectly. Again, the process for that is you start with the principal in the school, from there you go to the superintendent, from there you go to the school committee. But the school committee is always the last choice to come with the problems in the district. You have to go through the chain of command. That's what our policy is called for. Improper conduct and remarks are out of order. If a speaker persists, the chairman has to terminate their privileges to speak or have him removed to the meeting. I've only had to do that one time in the three years that I've been on the committee, and it wasn't something I wanted to do, but it was something that was orchestrated and forced me to do it in order to keep order in the meeting. Lastly, speakers may offer, and this is important, speakers may offer such objective criticisms of school operations and programs that concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor against any member of the school committee. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means of disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. So, you know, as much as people get irritated and they come to a meeting and something has happened with a teacher or something, some decision administration has made that they don't agree with, you just can't come to a public school committee and fire off. You have to go through the process to address those concerns, and again, we're the last channel that you have to come to if you don't get satisfaction with the prior one. So, that's the basic policy of the school committee. It's what I'm obligated by law and by statute to follow, and I know I get criticized by it an awful lot, and I know some people do think that I come across very strong and heavy-handed, and I guess I'd have to agree with that. I'm a results-oriented type person. I'm not warm and fuzzy, and when we come to a meeting, we've got business to take care of and work to be done, and I have to ensure that that gets done.
This is what happens when you're an incumbent and you're running for reelection, because it seems like the questions kind of take a shot always that way. So bear with us, guys, we're going to get you in on that. I know it's said that the school committee cannot hand out, and this is from, I can't quite see it, but, this is where Kevin looks like. You have said that the school committee cannot hand out discipline, yet the committee voted to authorize an investigation to the superintendent. Can you please explain that?
Sure. Again, this is another complicated issue, because if you, it's kind of like inside baseball, if you're not in and know the rules and regulations, it will certainly appear as though you're given some type of favoritism or just addressing those things that you feel that you want to address. The school committee is a legislative body. We set policy, we set the budget, and we approve the budget for the funding of the school system. We hire the superintendent, we hire town council, we hire the business manager after a recommendation from the superintendent, we hire the school nurses, and I think that's pretty much it. After that, the superintendent does all of the hiring. We have no discipline authority, because that's an administrative right under the statutes. We only have legislative rights. So we have the authority, if at any time we feel the taxpayers' funds are not being spent properly, or there's something amiss with our fiduciary responsibilities with taxpayers' money, then that responsibility does fall on us legislatively to authorize an investigation. Once we authorize that investigation and the initial report comes back to us, and if we determine that it needs further study or there needs to be some type of disciplinary action taken, we then have to turn it over to administration. We don't have the authority to move any further forward with it. Now, when it gets turned over to the administration, if it's an appointment that's made by the principal of the school, then the principal is the person that is authorized to hand out the discipline. If it's a district-wide position that's appointed by the superintendent of schools, then it would be the superintendent that would have the authority to make that disciplinary decision. In the case of the principals making it, the superintendent remains as the appeal person for that process.
Okay. Dale, any thoughts?
People do have to be, start being held accountable for their actions for certain things that are taking place. I mean, I don't have all the information on the investigations that are going on, but I think it's time that we start holding people accountable for their actions to, you know, put it out there that nobody's going to slide through the system anymore because they're a high-level figure in the district or the town.
Gary, if I may add on, Dale just made a good point, and I think this is what's lost by a lot of people, because these are good people, you know? I mean, and good people make mistakes, and we all do. And I think what Dale said is correct. As difficult as it is, people have to be held responsible for their actions and for the authority that they've been given. I've used the example, I think, once in a school committee meeting, in regards to the people that are involved here. I know both of them. I know one much longer than the other. I know one since he was probably 10 years old, coached him in basketball, coached him in football. We've never had as much as a bad word between us, but what came before us had nothing to do with personalities. It had to do with how the job was being done, whether it was done correctly, and whether or not there were violations of procedures and statutes and stuff. It's a sad situation, because it has torn the community apart, but at the end of the day, when you're elected as a school committee person and you come here to do this job, you have a responsibility to the taxpayers of both communities to protect how their funds are spent. And the final thing that I'll mention on this topic, and this has caused quite a bit of confusion. We have had members on the committee that I have to come to the conclusion have probably expressed in their communities that they were not a part of any role in the investigation or did not play any part of looking into the student activities or athletic funds. And I would like to dispel that once and for all tonight. It's all part of getting the pants-on truth before it makes its way halfway around the world. And I brought with me the minutes of the meetings of when we started to look at what happened, and would it be okay for me to take a little time and go through the process? I'll give you the Reader's Digest version of how this all came to take place. A new comptroller came to us and found some discrepancies in how some funds were being spent. Inquiries were made to the people that were involved, explanations were given, and those explanations didn't hold water. In the next several weeks, more and more items were brought to the attention of the superintendent. After about a month and a half and a substantial amount of questionable expenditures, the superintendent brought those issues to me as the chairman of the board. I expressed to her that I could not make a call on these, that I would have to bring them to the full committee, and it would be the decision of the committee as to whether or not they wanted to enact their legislative authority, which they did. I cannot discuss with you tonight the actions that took place in executive session, but on two occasions where the steps had to be taken, we were required by law to come out of executive session and then take a public vote in order to follow through with the actions that were decided on executive session. And here they are. The first one was on June 16th, and after coming out of an executive session, there was several motions that were made. And the first motion was to freeze all student activity accounts for all schools. Money would be put into escrow, no further expenditures would be allowed, and approval would have to be given for fundraisers. I think many people are asking, well, you know, why does the school committee have to be involved in fundraisers? Why are they wasting their time doing this for? Principals ought to be able to do this. Well, this was part of the problems that started the situation that we're in under the investigations. On that particular motion, that particular motion was made by Mr. Cludia, and it was seconded by Ms. Napkin, and there was a roll-call vote, and the vote was unanimous. Second motion was to recommend that the school committee authorize the comptroller to be the only person to sign checks out of the student activity accounts. That motion was made by Ms. Napton, seconded by Ms. Pelchat, and was a unanimous vote on a roll-call vote. The last motion was to authorize the committee to move forward with an investigation of the findings of the CPI accountants' report and start the process of looking into each individual charge that was being made. That motion was made by Ms. Napton, it was seconded by Ms. Messier, and on a roll-call vote, it was unanimous. Several weeks later, we came back with another emergency meeting, and we had to make the determination to hire an investigator, because the facts that were brought to us brought us to the point where we had concluded that an investigator had to be hired to go out and give all parties the opportunity to bring forward the information they have so that we could decipher what was right and wrong. On that motion, there was a motion to appoint Robert Hedigan as the investigator for the district. It was made by Ms. Napton and seconded by Ms. Pelchat. The roll-call vote was unanimous. So I guess my point for bringing this all out is, I've heard so much talk over the past several months that this is a witch hunt by the chairman, it's a witch hunt by the superintendent, this is Kevin Hayes and Vinnie Cludia trying to hold everybody else accountable and doing it on their own with their heavy-hand tackles at the board. I hope that dispels all the rumors that you have been told in both communities by members of this board as of them not being involved in what's taking place. Since I have been on this committee with the current board, every vote, with the exception of the reorganization of committee chairman and two other votes, have been unanimous votes. That means all seven people. And if you watch the meetings on TV, or if you've come to school committee meetings, you might see that I do most votes on roll-call. And when the votes get to me as chairman, they're usually six to nothing, and the issue has been decided by the time my vote is cast. So, not being thin-skinned about it, but I think it's a little bit unfair to try to hang the responsibility on the chairman for all the actions of what a full school committee has taken.
Okay. Thank you for that, Kevin. I'm going to give, Mr. Norquist, would you be a chance to answer that, if you'd like the opportunity?
I wasn't, I wasn't there just last year, so I can't answer that, but, no, I wasn't there.
Okay. I'm going to put this question out to everybody, because I think it's an important one. And it's virtually, you know, we hear about the students' protests, and there's a lot of that that happened, for whatever reason. It's not my place to decide what it was for, who was right or wrong, but I guess my question to everybody here is, how would you address the students who have protested numerous times outside of the high school? And you want to take it first?
I'll go first. I think everybody has a right in this country to protest, whether students or parents or anybody in this country, we have a right to protest. And I don't have a problem with that. If it's protested on school, at lunchtime or something, I don't want them walking out of the classroom to protest, but either before school or after school or near lunchtime, on their time, I don't have a problem with that. If it's oddly, that's the right in the United States, so I don't know the specifics of this last, or last couple of protests, but I did see in the paper that was protest, but that's as much as I know. So, with that being said, that's my viewpoint there.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Norquist. I mean, there's a time and a place, and I think during school hours are not the time nor the place. If you want to protest, that's fine, you have your right, but I think after school or during lunch hours or a half hour before school starts, that's fine, but to create a disruption in school, especially for other students that aren't involved in that protest, I just think it's a major disruption for the other students.
Kevin?
Well, having lived through this, I agree with both what Dale and Kurt said. I have no objections to students protesting at all, but there's a time and place for that. You know, they could protest before school, 15 or 20 minutes are after school, but I think, you know, students are in the classroom 180 days out of the year. We're in a Level III district that's in the lowest 20% performing in the state. The last thing we can afford is to have our students out of class and not getting the instruction that they deserve. Now, that, I'm not saying they don't have the right to do it, but I think the time, there's a right time and a wrong time to have it done. Now, contrary to the sit-in that was done, although I... Now, contrary to the sit-in that was done, although I didn't, I wasn't particularly pleased with it, I respect the rights of the students to do that, and I will tell you this, they were very respectful, they sat in the gym, they did their homework, they, you know, did things that they had coming up due or did studying and stuff. There was nobody that was out of line, there was no disciplinary problems, and that was a one-and-done thing, and that's fine, and I have no problem with trying to express themselves in that manner. But I will tell you this, having come through the system, having had seven children come through the system, having worked here in the superintendent's office and been a coach here for five or six years, I've never seen students involved in the level of the protest and demonstrations that they have been this year. And I think unfortunately, it's geared a lot in the example that has been set by the union. You know, the union took a vote of no confidence in the superintendent after less than a couple of months. They protested in the morning or before school, they're protesting now for the last thirty days before school, they've taken another vote of no confidence. And I think on a lot of levels, although they'll deny it, that, you know, kids have seen this example, and I think they've been encouraged, and I think they've been propped up in many regards by adults, and that's unfortunate. You know, I mean, as I said, there's a right time and place to do this, and I don't think that it's been done properly the last couple of times.
So I guess, you know, it's a book, ironically, I have to be close by, and I think that, I think the kids nowadays have a pretty good viewpoint on what they're looking for and what they're hoping to gain from an education. I think that it's, and I'll throw it out there because it was given to me at one of the school committee meetings, is all the stuff that the students had lost, and I should have brought it tonight, and I apologize for not doing that. But I just think that over the course of the years, I think when my kids went, there was a lot of fundraisers, and a lot of what I was given was a lot of fundraisers that they don't do anymore. So I don't know how you guys feel about the fundraising and how that reverts, and I'm gonna kinda address it to you, Kev, for a minute because you had read that piece in there, and I'm assuming, and I hate to say that word, that maybe you could just enlighten us on what the policy is dealing with that.
Well, thank you, Gary. Again, this has been an issue and stuff, and I know citizens have made the comments as to why the school committee has to be involved in fundraising. We brought it more to the forefront as a result of the investigation, so people kind of became more aware of it, but that also has been a policy of the district, and it's a two-page policy, so I won't take the time to go through and read every one. But the very first item under the policy is the ultimate control and responsibility for all events for fundraising, so rest with the regional school committee through the administration. So in the past, the school committee has given that authority to principals to be responsibly handling fundraisers. As we got into the investigation, we found that there had been all kinds of fundraisers that had been done that were not approved by the school committee. Money could not be accounted for, there was money that was raised and used to do improvements that benefit for the kids, but were never approved by the school committee, you know? It was a great, a great thing was done by some people in the community that put sprinkler systems in the baseball field. I think that's terrific. But there's a procedure and there's a policy that has to be followed and has to be accepted by the school committee because of a liability issue. You know, so it's just, I think what's happened is, over the course of time, there's been so little enforcement of the district policies that have been in place, and now we had a superintendent in the school committee that came in as a result of the investigation and having people saying to us, you're not enforcing your rules and regulations, you're not enforcing your statutes, you're not enforcing your policies, and we're now under state, under a state overseer. So although we have majority control of the district, we still do have to answer to people from the state that review on a monthly basis what's going on. That may explain why so many people have expressed concern on social media that, I guess they've kept people down at the state quite busy with their phone calls and emails and demanding investigations, and they wonder why, what's going on? How come the state hasn't responded? How come they're not coming out and doing something? How come they haven't taken the district over? It's because they're reviewing everything that's being done on a monthly basis, and we're following what we're being directed to do to bring the district in line, to make it solvent, to make it accountable.
See, all right, thanks for that. I guess I wanna kick this down the table a little bit because, you know, as we all know, not every kid's gonna be the football player, not everybody's gonna be the basketball player or, you know, run track, but there are certain functions that kids do do that for involvement throughout high school. So Dale, I'll kick it to you next, so what's your thoughts on that?
I think fundraisers are great. I mean, it's one way to keep your tax salaries down, to have more programs for the kids that aren't involved in, like you said, track, football, basketball. I do have one question for Mr. Hayes, though, just to further my knowledge on this. Has it always been the school committee's responsibility to accept or deny fundraisers?
Yeah.
Or is it only because of the investigations that are going on?
Thanks, Dale. Since 1975, which was the last date that I saw that these policies were accepted, that's been the rule in the policy of the district, that it was the school committee's responsibility. They also have the authority to delegate that responsibility, but because of the investigation, it was reined in currently over the past eight or nine months while we tried to get a handle on the financial situation.
Yeah, I just wanna say a couple.
And come back.
I wanna say a couple of points, Gary. When I was on the board, and this goes back to, I guess, a long time ago when it started, there was fundraising done for bus trips, Washington DC, they'd gone to England, and that was all approved by the school committee, and then the group that was going went out and made the fundraisers to pay for their tickets and airfare and whatever. So, you know, that's legitimate fundraising thing, and I always voted to do that, whether going to Sturbridge Village or going to England. They went down south a couple of times, but I always voted for them to do that because it's an education for the students and the chaperones to go with them. But what I have to say is, there's a lot of fundraisers in this here book here, which I wanna show to everybody. There's a lot of fundraising in here that pertains to the investigation, so this was never done, at my opinion, with the superintendent in the school committee, it was done as need be, and that's what got a lot of people in trouble. And it wasn't, it was open, but there was no credibility, there was no how much we took in, what we spent, we just went ahead and did it and found out after. So there's a lot of pages here, and, but I'm all for fundraising, and like I say, they went on those trips, and if they had fundraisers for uniforms, we always support them, so it wasn't us against them, it was us for all of us.
Okay. Dale, I'm gonna come back to you, 'cause I know you had another comment.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think communication would help a lot more with the fundraisers from the school committee to the superintendent and the staff, and not just, yes, we accept it, no, we didn't, or there's a way to put that out there a little better, I guess.
I think that's already in place, Dale. What happens is, all of the policies and procedures that have to be followed by this are in the hands of the principals of each building, and then those folks that choose to do fundraising, they should be going to the building principal. There's a few exceptions to that. The boosters club, you know, they do a fantastic job, they raise a lot of money for the athletic teams and stuff in the school, and they supplement our budget a good deal in helps with sports teams, and they pick up things that weren't in the budget, that our team may make it to a championship, and they may provide trophies or transportations or jackets for them and stuff. And the great thing about what they do, it is, it's, they're organized and it's not tied to the school. You know, they're a nonprofit, they raise their funds, we don't have to be concerned about it. They can take those funds and they can use them any way that they choose. I think we also have that same thing going on with the band. There's some parents that do the band boosters, and the same thing with them. If there were more groups that came forward, that came in and organized as nonprofits and wanted to do fundraising for the different teams or events or arts in the school, that would make it so much easier on the school committee because it would take us out of that completely, and those groups would be able to do it and use those funds as they see fit. The problem is, when they're doing it under the umbrella of the school department, we become responsible for it, it has to be reported to us, it has to be approved by us, and that's what the district policy calls for. What I think may help moving forward, for the first time in this 2016-2017 budget, we have earmarked, and don't hold me to the exact number, but my memory is gonna tell me forty or fifty thousand dollars for the athletic department, thirty or forty thousand dollars for the band, thirty or forty thousand dollars for theater, twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars for the art department, and this is going to be used as funds for those departments so that they can go and do the things that will enhance the curriculum, enhance student involvement, and they haven't had these funds available to them in the past, and we hope to be able to leave those as line items in the budget to be funded every year. And the ultimate result of this is hopefully there'll be a less and less need for those departments to have to fundraise. I mean, it would be really nice for the people running the band or the theater or an arts program, you know, to be able to just say, I've got thirty thousand dollars in the budget, kids, you wanna do this? We can do it. We don't have to go out and hit grammar and grandpa to buy a cake or an apple pie. You know, there's a lot of fundraising that goes in on this district. I think on a monthly basis, I wouldn't be surprised if there isn't close to eight, ten, twelve requests to come to us on a monthly basis, because it happens at all levels of the school, and there's a lot of great people involved and they do a lot of great things.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any way to do like a fundraising fair? So like, either at the high school or by village school, have, you know, kids from the show choir, kids from the track team or the football team, and bring the community there. That way they can say, hey, we're doing a fundraising for this reason, we're doing a fundraiser for that reason. That way, when they don't, when they go out to sell their cakes or their cookies or candy bars, they don't just say, hey, I'm in the show choir, we need five thousand dollars for a new set piece, or we need, you know, ten thousand dollars for helmets. At least that would bring the community in, that way they can see.
Let's bounce off of it. That's a good idea, so let's bounce off of it. Based on all the cuts that we've seen and what was affected due to, whether it's the investigation, whatever tipped it off, so what would you do to restore those? How are we gonna get back to where we were? I guess is a real question people are looking for an answer for, is, you know, how do you restore the program and the events that the students always had? Tough.
That is a tough question when you're financially disabled, I guess, so to speak. I mean, maybe bring one thing back at a time, and I hate to say, pick the most important one, because that would leave other people out.
Gary, if I may, what I could add to that, Dale's correct, it is a difficult thing to address, but I'm not so sure that things have been lost because of financial purposes. Things have been lost to some degree at the high school by choice. When the investigation first took place, you know, and we lost the person that was doing the show choir and some of the other events, the administration had hired other people to continue with those programs, and the administration met with the students that were involved in those programs and some of the parents, and the administration was told flat out, if we don't have the person we want, we will refuse to participate and we'll boycott the program. So the programs, I think for the most part, aren't running because of a lack of money, they're running because of a conscious decision not to participate in those programs. I think Dale's idea of having a fundraising fair is a great idea. One benefit I could see right off the top, Dale, is you could do this once or twice a year, and then groups wouldn't be held up to get approval from the school. And people that like to donate to these things would be able to plan their budgets, you know, so I think that's, I think.
Put it out on the town website, you know, maybe bring it up at one or two school committee meetings prior.
Exactly.
To the event.
Yep.
You know, that way you get the word out there a lot more.
Yep.
Like we said before, communication's key.
Right.
And I think that's what we're lacking.
Yep.
Big time right now.
It would certainly make it much easier for those people that put in all the time and effort to try to help the kids, you know, to do these things and stuff, so that's certainly something that would be worth looking into.
Kirk, you want to join in?
Yeah, I just say, I used to see, you see how a lot of car washes up here at the high school. I don't know who put them on, I think it was the high school students and their chaperones or teachers. I don't know what it was for, it was a good idea, they had them two, three times a year, and I always attended, had my car washed just to donate the money. But I don't see that now, so I don't know what it was about, but I think that'd be a good something for the kids to do. They get outside, they wash their car and whatever, you know, so whoever put that on, I think that would be a good fundraiser for whatever they did, but I kinda miss that.
I know that, you know, I can only speak from the town side because it usually runs in cycles. I know, you know, when I talked about the cuts made to the school and the programs, you know, I always look at the other side because that's the side I'm on. That doesn't mean that, you know, it's us against you by any means, but, you know, I look at the cuts we made and, you know, and how do we gain back services? So I know it's a tough fight, so it's critical for the kids to be able to, to be involved in this stuff. And I appreciate your comments that, you know, maybe you tackle it one time, it could be the answer, but timeframe, you know, the seniors this year, and I think they're doing the senior steps I saw them doing or something, and I'm real glad to see that. So what's your feelings on that type? You know, my kids went through it, so what took so long to get this back, and what would you do different? Mr. Norquist, I know you were on the board before, so you might have a little insight. Dale, it's new to you, but you went there, so you know what it was.
Right.
So what's your feeling on that?
I mean, obviously painting the senior stairs is one of those things you always look forward to as you're going through the high school level, you know, being able to walk down the senior stairs and go outside versus walking the hallway inside. You know, it's, to be able to do that, I think is great. It brings like the morale of the school back up, you know, you get to show, you know, you don't have to just paint it a sports theme, you don't just have to paint it, you know? Any other events in the school, it could be just, you wanna put your name on there. Many different things that can be done to, I guess, bring things back together.
Dale's right, that's always been, I graduated through here in 1973, not to date myself, but that was a rite of passage back then. You know, those were the senior steps, it was only used by seniors, they were painted normally at the end of the junior year, and they were done for when you came in in September. This particular case, unfortunately, with what took place with the investigation, the class advisor for this particular class decided that there was a risk that he may be accused of mishandling funds, and he wasn't willing to go out and purchase the paint and to put in a slip to be reimbursed for it, so he chose to not have the senior class participate in doing that, and that's unfortunate. It's a very simple process, the money is in the account at the high school, it's just a matter of making a request and getting it done. But we see that happen quite often as we're going through this turmoil of the investigation and the confrontations with union leaders. Recently, there's, the kids had taken a trip, I think it was on an Envirethon trip, and they were out trying to raise money, thirty-five dollars a kid for their bus fare, and the superintendent had an opportunity to speak with the teacher that's handling and said, what are you doing fundraising for transportation for? And she said, well, we've been told that there's no money in the district and there's no money for funds to transport. She said, absolutely, come over to the building and fill out the proper forms, we're more than happy to pay for the transportation, you know? I mean, we're sitting in a budget that is a balanced budget, that by state direction, we had to spend some 1.9 million dollars over the past four or five months. You know, we have restored, I think, or put in place, funds to restore anything that anybody claims they have legitimately had taken away from them. But again, I'll reiterate, I think in the majority of the cases, this is a conscious decision of either staff or students deciding not to participate for their own motives.
So just to finish up on this question, because part of it was what was called in, I think Kada gave us, and part of that was, is how are we gonna restore the cuts made? And I know, you know, it seems like all the questions, unfortunately, and that's why I gave you the opportunity to answer, because I think if we're heading in that direction, do you have a timetable where we're gonna head with this, I guess? And that's kinda what, you know, they wanna know when the cuts that were made, are they gonna get restored?
I guess the best way I can respond to that, Gary, is, we just went through a budget process where every principal of every school met on a weekly basis with the superintendent, and they presented to the superintendent their priorities of funding for the budgets for their school. The superintendent brought that to the school committee, and we did not. The superintendent brought that to the school committee, and we did not deny a single thing that was requested of us by a principal or by the superintendent. So I think the best answer is, I believe we are funding. We're certainly funding everything that's being requested by us, by the principals of the buildings. And they are the people that run the show here. I think what's difficult to understand, because the process has been so lax, you know, we're currently spending over a couple hundred thousand dollars to purchase textbooks and, you remember all the confusion about AP textbooks and they weren't audited and there wasn't money for them and so on and so forth? There was money budgeted for AP textbooks. Fact of the matter was, the principal at the time never did the order, never ordered the textbooks and didn't notify us until the third week of August that he had not notified the textbooks, had not ordered the textbooks on his way out the door. We've had students come in waving books saying, I've got a book that's falling apart, and they were. Binders were torn off of them, the book is twenty-five years old. And I could see the frustration of the students, but the thought that came to my mind, where has everybody been for the last twenty years while these books were outdated? Where were the requests to replace these books? I mean, I go back, I look in the records, I don't see them. I mean, I'm just, I'm grateful that we're at the point now that we have the funds to be able to address those issues. And, you know, we're in the process of revamping the library at the high school. It's gonna be staffed with all new books and periodicals. You know, we're revamping, we have revamped all the AP books, and we're spending another couple hundred thousand dollars on regular textbooks, you know, across the district and a curriculum renewal. So I guess the short answer to the question is, the request has to be made. If it's from students, it goes from students to their advisors, to either the vice principal or the principal, and to the superintendent. Again, there's a chain of command and there's a process for everything to be followed. But when you're ramped up about things and you're trying to fight for a cause, you tend to wanna come in where the TV cameras are and do your bidding at a school committee meeting. And when you do that, the boat has already sailed. And the last piece that falls in place with this is every school is supposed to have a parents' council. That parents' council is authorized by state statute to be involved with the principals of the school, to develop the budget, to decide what maintenance issues need to be addressed, what textbooks need to be purchased, what could improve the curriculum that's being offered in the school district. That all happens on the parent council level with the principals. Then the principals are supposed to bring that information to the superintendent, and then the superintendent brings it to the school committee. So again, when it gets to the school committee, the boat is sealed. We're simply looking at what's been requested by those professionals that are in the classroom and in the buildings telling us what they need.
To that whole school council, are people aware of that in the town? That state statute says you gotta have a school council for every school in the district made up of parents and teachers?
Yeah.
Or is that just something that should be known?
No, I think parent councils have been active, they have been active in the community. I think there's one currently active at the high school and at Knox Trail, and I think also at Wyatt Village. So I think, I think they have always been active. I'm not sure if they know, you know, what their responsibilities are and rights are under state statute and the type of involvement that they can have, but those committees are appointed by law by the principal of each building. And then that principal is responsible by statute to give them what their duties and responsibilities are and how they can participate.
Maybe they just need to communicate a little better with each other.
Well, again, as we move, because it's probably, my guess is, it's probably about somewhere around five of eight. We haven't really touched on a lot of stuff, and I know Aaron's willing to stay on and we'll keep moving. I'd like to move it along a little more because I know that there's a lot of questions in the queue.
Okay.
So I'm gonna give everybody the opportunity, but I think we'll pick up the pace a little bit. And unfortunately, because when you're the incumbent, you get more of the questions, but I want everybody to have the opportunity to answer on it. And if you don't know, that's okay. So again, and I kinda thought this might be where this would go tonight, but, so, and this one again is to Kevin, I'd like everybody to comment if you have anything to add. We're gonna move it right along a little bit, try to be a little quicker. And this is to you again, Kevin, this is, you talked about policies, you could have righted the ship, fix a policy without an investigation. What's your comment on that? And this should be pretty easy, because I think we just talked about it, but.
We did do that, Gary. Policies were in place when we came on the board, but they were somewhat weak. In October of two thousand and fourteen, Vinny Cludier married the state policies and procedures, put them together. They were approved by the committee, and then the treasurer, the state overseer, met with the principals, the vice principals, the athletic directors, all those people involved in doing fundraising and handling money, and made them aware of what the policies and procedures were to be.
Any comment?
I mean, I guess without being inside on the committee before this, with a lot of the investigation things, I can't really come up with a better answer, I suppose. If I were elected, then I'd have to sit down and really look over the policies and get the numbers and figure out what actually is going on before you can make a better call other than social media.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, I just wanna say to Gary that what Mr. Hayes says, I was on the board when the investigation started, and that was, that was, Vinny Cludier went back and checked the state policies and informed the principals. Some did know, some had no idea, but, so it's all been laid out now, so from here on, it's going forward on a straight and even keel. So don't be no more discussion about what's this and what's that. It's all been given to them and take it from there. I think this is a big thing for the principals to do, but they stepped up and did it, so I think that's a good cause.
Which will get us to our next question, which is, you know, why didn't the school committee just, why didn't the school committee just not fix the policy instead of the investigation? And the comment is, there was no theft. I don't have the answer for that, whether it was or wasn't, I'm not privy to it, but I will leave that open to you.
Yes. Again, the proper policies were in place. The problem is policies don't address right and wrong. A lot of times in the handling of some of these things, it requires an adult to be able to decipher right from wrong, and the policies merely as a guide for them to follow. But let me make it clear, there was no misunderstanding as to what the policies or the procedures were that were to be followed in handling funds since Mr. Cludier and myself came on this committee, and the policies were rewritten to mirror the state statutes. And the comment in regards to there was no theft, that is something that is part of the investigative process, which is not over, and so I cannot make a comment about that at this time. But I would say, I would add, if that is the case, and the caller brings up a good point, I'll reaffirm a statement that I made at the last school committee meeting. For those people that are involved, if you have not participated in the alleged, the alleged findings of this report, then sign a waiver, have your attorney or yourself come to the administrative building, sign a waiver, and give us the authority to release the report. And let the report speak for itself. And let the taxpayers that have paid the thirty-five thousand dollars to have this done, let them see what the facts of the matter are, and it will show either guilt or innocence or whether there was any involvement in the alleged activities that the investigator found. But to simply say that this didn't happen, that that didn't happen, and to let this snowball the way it has on social media and around the community, this can all be resolved in a snap of a finger. Sign the release form, give us the authority to release the report, and we'll be happy to do it. We can't do it without that release form, because whether there was misconduct or not, we have an obligation to protect the employees of the district. So our hands are tied, but those people that are involved in this, they certainly have the right to make this public, and I wish they would, because this would bring this to a head overnight.
Again, I'm not privy to it, and I'm sure that everybody has their reasons for it. It's not my place to judge.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say on the cover here, this is redacted version. There's no names mentioned for that reason. What Mr. Hayes says, there's no names mentioned, but there is paperwork of what was and what is missing and whatever. That's in this report. So there's no names mentioned for that reason, so that's why it's redacted version. It is what it's, but what was done is in here, you know? And that wasn't the school committee, it wasn't the superintendent, it was an outside investigator who went out and did the work, did the legwork and come back with a report.
Okay, thank you. Next question is to you again, Mr. Hayes, and it's from Heather. Never once said she would not support an investigation. This is a false rumor. Committee had a fiscal responsibility to support the investigation. So I'm trying to figure out exactly what that means.
I think I have to adjust a bit. My comment to it would be, I thank Heather for that comment, and I hope that if this is a rumor, that this helps to dispel it, because yes, you and every other member of the committee has supported this right from day one.
Okay. We're gonna continue on, because I know there's a lot of phone calls in the queue. Is that correct, Aaron? We're gonna give everybody the opportunity to at least get out there and get your message out. I think it's important that everybody gets their message out. It really doesn't matter, you just gotta pound and explain what you're trying to do. You know, what we'd like to get is ideas from you guys, what you would do, and I know there's a learning curve for you, Dale, but Mr. Norquist's been on the board, he should have a little insight on it along with you. So what's some of your ideas, I think you'll bring that will help this district move forward and get us to where we have to be from a level three?
I just wanted, I just wanted to say that we should start, not start paying attention, that's not the right word, but work for the students, with them, and this district, the school district, whether it's East Brookfield and Spence or whatever, is for the kids. The people who, the teachers and the staff and everybody else, the administration, we're all here for the children. And this is what we should be doing, and that's why I'm running again, to push these kids, to help them out, and to give them computer stuff to get going here. They've gone over, they're up top of the hill now, now it's just to keep them going so when they go off here, they go to college and they'll have a good start in college. And what's in the past is in the past. We can't forget about it, but we can just move on instead of crying and this and that, and it's, just move on. I mean, we're all getting older, and, but the students, that's why we're here, for the students to go forward and get a good education. And we can do that, you know? So it's nothing that we can't do. So I'm, that's why I decided to run again, to help the students out now and get going.
Dale?
I guess one of my ideas that I bring to the table is trying to get a full-time grant writer. I think we're missing out on a lot of money that could be given to us through several grants for different items. Because I know the company I work for, they have, they write grants for so many different things, you know, whether it be classes we have to take for, you know, whether it be asbestos awareness, whether it be, you know, anything to do with in the gas industry. They hold one at like a state police barracks, because that's where they get the grant fund for. So I think if we were able to get a full-time grant writer, we could say, well, whatever it may be, we need, you know, a few more AP classes. So maybe we can get that out there and see what kind of grant money is for different AP classes, for different subjects, or, you know, for books or computers or, you know, whether it be for sports programs, there's thousands and thousands of dollars out there that I think we're missing out on because we're not, we don't have a full-time grant writer.
And you're right, I appreciate that, because I think, you know, just from the town side to that side, is we always look for new ways to be creative, so I do appreciate that comment.
I think one of the things you have to do, Gary, in order to bring back academic rigor and excellence to the curriculum, is you've gotta put those hooks up on the wall. Every kid comes to a certain school district for a variety of reasons, some of for sports, some of for music, some of for art, some of for academics. Currently, right now, we offer AP classes in calculus, statistics, environmental science, US history, psychology, English in grade eleven and twelve, music theory and biology. The new budget that was just put together, we are going to implement a robotics program that is gonna run from grade K through grade twelve, which is gonna be a fantastic program for those kids that aren't interested in sports or other aspects of arts and stuff like this. But those are the type of things that will help to hook a kid to stay in the district and maybe help other kids that are left to come back. But you've gotta be able to bring that academic rigor and excellence into the system, and that's where it starts.
Okay. I'm gonna give you a chance to decide if you wanna answer this or you don't. It's entirely up to you.
You know, I welcome the opportunity, Gary, to answer it, because I think unfortunately...
Let me read the question first. And I said when we did this, if it got real personal, I'd give them the opportunity to decide if they want to answer or not, and the question is, wasn't this investigation just retaliation for the athletic director passing over your wife for her job? So I will leave that to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm more than happy to address this, Gary. And I'll address the whole ball of wax in this situation, once and once only. My wife has been working for this district just shy of ten years. So I guess some may have thought that she should have resigned, because I volunteered my time to come on the school committee. What would be a surprise to most people is, my wife was hired as a field hockey coach by Chuck Fahy, who was the athletic director. He hired my wife to coach the athletic team. My wife came to coach the indoor track team this past winter. The only reason that she coached that team was because the positions that had been put out seeking full-time employees in the district to serve on were posted in the teacher's lounge with SCAB positions written across them. And all employees sat on their hands and refused to come forward and to serve in the capacity to fill any of those positions. And it was on the last day that the athletic director came to my wife and said, nobody else is willing to do this. If you don't do it, the program's gonna be canceled, the schedules will be canceled, there'll be no indoor track for students. My wife's response was, I don't know the first thing about track. And he said, right now, it's just about giving the kids the opportunity to participate and not have the program canceled. So that's how my wife came to come into that position. These positions are not appointed by the school committee, they're appointed by either the athletic director and approved by the principals in the buildings. I give my wife a lot of credit to put up with the crap that she's had to put up with around here for the past seven or eight months, but she won't continue to step forward, she will continue to step forward, and she'll be of assistance to any of the kids in any of the areas. I'm happy to say, I heard Mr. Manette say that he coached the track team to two state championships, he did a fantastic job with them. When my wife took over this indoor track issue this September, this December, there were twenty kids signed up. By the time they announced that she was willing to step forward, fifty-four students ended up participating in the program. So I think that's a positive thing. People can spin it to try to make it negative in any fashion or shape that they want, but my wife is one person that's committed to this district and will continue to be.
Thank you. So the school department had an overseer for the budget. What happened to that person?
We have, we currently still have an overseer, however, it's not the same person that was here when we first borrowed the funds. When we went out to borrow the one point one million dollars and the special legislation was approved, the condition on it was that we have a financial overseer. You have to keep in mind, we didn't have a business manager at the time. We had a person that was sent to us by the state to just to be a shot, for a short time period, to be the business manager. When we hired Dr. Crowe, we had to hire a superintendent and a comptroller, because we were without both of them. So the second overseer is still here, and he works very closely with us, he works closely with the comptroller, he meets with him on four or five, six times a month, reports are compiled and sent to the State Department of Education for approval of the commissioner as to how we're running the district.
Okay, so they're still there? So I guess, you know, we can talk about the turmoil, we can talk about the, you know, social media, but how do we get back to basics? How do we create this into becoming a better school district? How do we... How do we hold on to the kids that are leaving? What would be your ideas?
Communication is key, I think. We've got to get people more involved. People can't just sit on social media and just talk about things that are going on. You've got to go to meetings and be civil at the meetings. Screaming and yelling doesn't solve anything. We'll just continue to go with what we have going on right now. We need to get people there, get involved, ask questions. If you have a question that's not on the agenda, ask the board to put it on the agenda for the next meeting. You know, I think that's where we're being hurt right now, is by social media. And nobody communicates in person anymore. And that's how a lot of the false rumors start.
I think that what Dale says is right. Can't be talking about social media. Come to work together. Drop all the anger out there because it's not helping the district. Drop the anger, get back to working together, everybody, the teachers, the students are the ones that are doing the suffering, hate to say that. But just work forward to get this thing. This investigation will be coming to an end pretty soon if it isn't done, or I don't know the second phase, but it's coming to an end. Move on. Just pick up your marbles and move on. But in this town here, somebody always has to throw daggers at somebody and say this and say that. And it's not true. And people believe it because they don't know what the difference is. So they believe it and it just spins around, spins around, like Dale says. Work together. But if we don't want to work together, we're never going to get anywhere. We're never going to get anywhere. When we had a department superintendent was here that had caused problems, he's gone and we come back to work together again. I mean, it's just, it's a part of growing up. And what Mr. Hayes is talking about robotics for the kids, that's what the district's doing for the kids. That's scientific and science, whatever, and helping build, if they're going to build robots, whatever they're going to do, to have a big program at that, up at WPI for younger kids going into it. I mean, we have to go forward here. We can't just sit and dwell about problems because it's not going to solve nothing. Time's going by here. And let's all work together. But if you're going to have some people who don't want to work together, I guess there's always going to be a bad apple in the crowd.
Well, let me ask quickly then, and this is to you, Kevin. When's the investigation going to end? A legit question, I guess.
Yeah. At this point, the high school principal has already taken disciplinary action in regards to one of the subjects. So to my knowledge, that will pretty much put an end to that part of the investigation. And I believe the investigation of the other subjects are still ongoing. But I'm not privy to the status of that or where that is. We will know that as a committee when we're told by administration that it has been completed and that the discipline has been handed out.
I just have one question. There's all that talk about new things coming into the district such as a robotics program. And I know it's been mentioned at meetings about it. But I guess this goes back to what I mentioned earlier about the fundraiser affair. But is there any way to like have something set up either on a Saturday or in half to school during the week in the cafeteria or at Y Village or wherever, showing like, you know, these are the robotics program, this is what it's about, these are what the kids are going to be doing?
Yeah. I think that's a great idea and that is planned...
Get the community more involved.
Right. That is planned to be done. But what we've done to this, at this point, is we had the vendors come in that we were purchasing the equipment from. And a large part of the staff, of the teaching staff, came to sessions that were held over two or three or four different days where they were shown, you know, the equipment, what it could do. I mean, we got some exciting things going on. We're putting systems called Sprouts that come with 3D printers where kids will be able to interact and actually create items that they're working on, on the computer. We've got a host of iPads and Smartboards where kids will be able to use their cellphones for positive results in a classroom, be able to respond on the Smartboard and interact with the teacher and stuff. So we've done that deal on the level with the instructors. And yes, once they get here, there will be an opportunity for parents and students to come and see exactly what they're capable of doing. It's going to be an exciting time, okay?
Okay. I'm going to ask this last question because it seems like everything is, it's gone away from where I hoped it would be and most of it's to deal with the what ifs. So the last one I'm going to ask, and again, I have to ask you, Kevin, and I apologize that this is the way it's going, but who discovered the missing money in the first place? If you can answer it, fine. If you can't, that's okay.
Well, I think Mr. Norquist will have an opportunity to shed a little more light on this as well. But when I had first come on the school committee, on several occasions, he had brought up the issue of inconsistencies with funds being handled in some of the activity and athletic accounts. And he was working, when I came on the board, with the treasurer and with the superintendent and trying to get answers to some of his questions. From my standpoint, as a member of the committee, the discrepancies were first discovered by the comptroller of the district, who brought it to the attention of the superintendent. And then the decision was made to hire a financial accountant to come and look at the transactions. I forget the exact number, I think there were some 93 of them. Out of 93 of them, they totaled somewhere around $75,000 to $80,000. And I think the determination was made by the investigator, only around $2,500 was spent legally and within the guidelines of the district policies and the state statutes. Leaving close to some $70,000 had been mishandled.
Norquist, you want to follow up quickly?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, not to beat my chest, but I think back in 2012, somewhere around there, I was in East Brookfield and it was a different committee than who's there now. I don't think there's one person on the committee now that was there. It was East Brookfield, in the library, and it was a monthly report, expense report, which every member gets every month, what's spent, what's left in the account, whatever. And I noticed teachers' salaries for insurance, pardon me, teachers' health insurance account, it was minus $600,000. Now, I looked twice on it and I says, this can't be right here. So I asked the superintendent at the time, and he said, well, I'll get back to you. I said, well, that's not the answer. $600,000 in the minus, the teachers have to have insurances here. Why is it, well, I'll get back to you. Well, then I start looking, while he was talking, I was looking in the expense report and I come across other things that were shot. Cafeteria money was shot to buy food. And so at the end of the day, he'd get back to us. He always said he'd get back to us. The sad part about it is, is he fired the business manager, which I supported with another member, I can't think of his name now, but we fought to give this guy a chance instead of just firing him. But he fired him anyways, he has authority. And that's where, he controlled the books. So he had the books and he controlled, not controlled the spending, he did control the spending because he just gives report what was spent. And that was a slide downhill. He controlled the money. So he knew what was in there, what wasn't. And that was the start of it. And it's sad to say, but I just couldn't let this go by. And it kept snowballing as time went by. He since resigned from the board and we didn't have one. We had an interim superintendent come in from inside. And it just kept sliding because nobody really knew what was in the budget because we didn't have a business manager. And so that was really the start of it. And then it started to go over here to high school. People were working and they were taking money off the top for their paychecks, which is against the IRS rules. But that was another thing I happened to catch. And I brought that to the business manager, I mean, to the treasurer. And she investigated that. And it just kept going. And that's what started it, Mr. Gary, you know? I hate to say that, but that's the truth.
Well, I think as we don't get all the answers, I guess we're going to do our closing statements right now. And I think it's very important to send a message on why you feel that the public should vote for you. What's special, what needs, and I'm going to give you the opportunity, Mr. Norquist, if you want to go first?
Yeah, I just want to say, before I have my closing statement, there's two other members that would be running for school committee. And they decided not to come. We were all invited, all three of us, we all came. And these people didn't come. And I find it hard to understand, when somebody's running for an office, you should come here and tell the voters why you are running. Mr. Hayes did it, Mr. Wiley did it, myself did it. And answer questions that came in. And instead of staying home and using social media or what they're doing, but how's the people going to vote for you when you don't take a stand on the reason why you're running? Now, I can see a couple stands where individual here has family working here, they get benefits through the system, they can't vote in the benefits, they can't vote in retirement, I mean, on and on it goes. And then at the same time, they support an individual who's under investigation, gave them money. That's a conflict right there, so they can't vote on that issue neither. So I mean, why stay in the dark? Why let the voters of this district, Spencer, East Brookfield, hear what you've got to say? If you don't like what we're saying, then don't vote for us. If you think we're doing the right thing, vote for us. But at least have a public statement. I mean, we have this in Washington now and it's absurd they're not here. And if they want to send a letter, you know, their statement, that'd be nice because I know in the past they did that. But not to show up, I think that's just outright rot, you know? And so to get back to why I'm running is, like I say, I was here in the last three years and I supported what, I don't want to rehash things, but I supported getting the thing out of debt, out of bankruptcy, working to solve contracts. Supported at the time when I was here to spend money for the kids to do this. I always supported taking trips. And one of my favorite things is, I went to East Brookfield, this was brought up earlier, but I just want to say, I went to East Brookfield and Mr. Tomlin and the parent teachers, they had an ice cream social and I was asked to go down there as a school committee member. And I couldn't believe the parents come out. I think it was for kids soccer in East Brookfield. And they made a ton of money. I had a great time seeing the kids there and they put all their own stuff on it. It was a great time. I think they did it once here in Spencer at the high school. I wasn't here then, but I heard that. But they made a ton of money and they all had a good time. And I don't know why, this can't go on. But I'm involved with the district when asked, I go there, I help out, I help the kids at Lake Street School, I, you know, had them planting flowers, you know, I mean, one-on-one to get their hands wet. And I enjoy working with the kids. And that's why I'm still here to tell you why I'm here, because I still like to work with them. But that's, I'm open, I'm honest, my phone's in the book. You can always call me if you have a question. You can always ask me, when I was on the school committee, come up and talk to me before or after. So I'm always available. But I just want to have another shot at this and make it right for all the students.
Thank you.
I guess I'd like just to say that I've never been inside the machine, if you will, as some people call it. I feel as though with not having any ties to the inside of the district or the inside of the town, that I won't be able to be persuaded to make decisions to benefit other people. I could probably make more of the unbiased decisions if needed. You know, I mean, listen, I could sit here and tell you, I was a football captain, I was this person, I was that person. I don't think that really makes you the better person to sit in that seat, to make decisions for the kids. Yes, maybe you're involved in sports, but I just think that not being inside, that you can make the more unbiased decisions. And I think that I could make that anyways and not be persuaded by others. And just try to help bring this district back to what it was when I was there. It was some of the best years of my life, minus my kids being born. So find out on May 10th, I guess.
Thank you. Kevin?
Again, thanks for the opportunity to answer some of these questions. And hopefully, as I stated at the beginning of this forum, I hope you come away tonight a little better informed than you were based upon what you've read on social media or what you've been told on the streets of Spencer and East Brookfield. And we talked a lot tonight about the problems of the district. Talked a lot about the financial problems, the cultural problems, the educational problems. But at some point, we've got to stop talking about those things. We've got to start addressing how are we going to move forward? In my mind, the best way for us to move forward is to start the implementation of our district improvement plan. Superintendent Crowe presented to the school committee several months ago, a three-year district improvement plan. That plan was approved by the school committee. We then developed the budget that is going before both communities to be approved, was built around that three-year district improvement plan. It has a mission statement, it has a set of goals, and it has an action plan. The goals of that are laudable goals. It's to provide a safe and secure learning environment for all of our students. That budget does that by providing the funds to do all the repairs and all the maintenance items that I addressed with you earlier. In addition to the fact that we now have been able to hire a full-time superintendent of buildings and grounds to make sure that that safety and security holds out. It also calls for improving student instruction by providing students with 21st century technology and the professional development to utilize that technology. I think that's going to be an exciting point in the district's history. I think it's going to make a big difference in getting students that left the district to choice back in. And I think it's going to increase our chances of getting students to choice into the district that are now in other communities. I mean, to bring a robotics program from grades K through 12 will be phenomenal for those students that are interested in that type of thing. The three-year improvement plan also calls for us to establish relationships with the community and with organizations within the community. As everybody's mentioned here tonight and as we have all admitted to, there definitely is a level of problems with communication. Those can be addressed moving forward and they will be addressed in the three-year improvement plan. But I think if we follow the plan that's been put in place, this plan was devised by the principals and vice principals through the district, working with Dr. Crowe and with Dr. Jordan, who will be Dean of Academic Affairs and will start the process at the end of the school year of doing the renewal of our curriculum from grades K through 12. That renewal will include the elimination of block scheduling. That's something that at some point, there'll have to be impact, bargaining done with the union. But we have been told about the detriment of running a district, a block program in this district. This came to light in the last couple of days. There was quite a to-do about bills that went out for students for AP classes. And I think that if I will, as part of my closing statements, I'll read this last couple paragraphs. It will address what happened there, but it'll also address the reason why we're having some of the problems that we're having with testing and with scores in the district. And this is a letter that came from a gentleman from the state that runs the MNC program, which is for the AP classes. Please find below the guidance sent to all schools in the program relative to the support of exam fees. This has not changed in several years. Nothing different has been promised to any school. I had the opportunity to discuss AP with David Proudy students in an assembly last spring and have to kick off this fall. Nothing different was promised. As a senior field director of the program, I am very sure of the language we use with students as well as parents. There were also legislators in attendance who heard the briefing as well. We tell the students that we help pay for the exam up to 25%. We also support classroom teachers with our content directors, funding of equipment and supplies, Saturday student study sessions and up to seven days of high-quality professional development per year. We have supported over 90 Massachusetts high schools in our eight years of supporting teachers and students. A concern we raised last year with Principal Beishant was how block scheduling interacts with AP courses. I had a further discussion at Proudy with the new principal in August. STEM in particular is usually two college semesters, which is why students can often get 68 college credits. This is impossible to complete in one high school semester. This is further exacerbated by the exam schedule the first two weeks in May. If the student only had the course in the first block, not only would they not complete the requirements, but they would need to wait several months to take the test. If they had the course in the second block, they don't even get a full high school semester of instruction. Successful AP programs run the course full year, block on or not. When we visited Proudy, we identified this as a key cause and the poor... When we visited Proudy, we identified this as a key cause and the poor scoring, and recommended that block schedule changes. This is an important fact, because it's something that we're going to get resistance from, from union leadership, because of the benefits of it to members that are in the unit, but it certainly doesn't benefit the students of the district, and it's something that needs to change, and it will change. To finish in my closing statement, I'm asking you to give me your vote, your one or two votes, to come back and to return to the school just, district, to finish the job that I started three years ago. When I came to this board, I had no idea it was going to take the length of time that it took to straighten out the financial mess that we walked into. I came here with the idea that I was going to be able to solve this problem with the help of committee members within a four to six-month period, never dreaming that it would end up into investigations and take close to a three-year period to turn it around. The good news is, we've turned it around. We've got a balanced budget, we've got close to a million dollars in reserves, we're spending 1.9 million dollars for improvements, capital improvements to buildings, district improvements for supplies, for tech books, for technology, for curriculum upgrades. We've got all the pieces in place, all the hard work has been done. Now the fun work starts, to implement all this technological equipment that's been purchased, to see the difference of what's going to happen with our scores, what's going to happen educationally to the kids, to get the education out of this district, once we get these things in place. I want to be part of that. I think it's too much of a price to pay to let the union ask you for both your votes. We can't revert to that. We saw what the results of that was. There's been too cozy of a relationship in this district for many, many years. Yes, it allowed for a very happy staff, but it did nothing for the kids. They paid the price. We can't afford to return to that. I ask for your vote on May 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We're going to end tonight, and I just want to let everybody know at home, is you met three of the candidates tonight. There are five vying for two seats. Your vote is important, doesn't matter who you support, look at the issues. Everybody seems to have everything up on Facebook or wherever. Take a look at what people believe in, and make up your mind. Do your homework, study hard, and let's do it for the kids. Thank you, everybody, and good night.